I think we're ready to go. I don't know what Brandon's, I haven't heard anything.
He's on his way.
Okay, super. Well, good evening. It is 6:15 Monday, March 4th. We have a quorum and we're going to start up our Lewisville City Council workshop session. First up is discussion of the regular agenda items and consent agenda items. Councilmember Jones. Get your packets. We've got invocation, Councilmember Cade. I'll be doing the pledges. We have proclamation. We have an award of an Eagle Scout rank. We have a presentation of the Excellence in Libraries Awards. Is this the first one or?
We've done it actually back in the day. We used to do it, but this is the first time we've, they used to have a very manual process and now it's become digital and we've decided we are going to start every year. But I can tell you, if we applied every year, we would have.
Oh, I know we would, I know we would because we have such an amazing library. So, well, I'm excited to have Carolyn up and we'll showcase our library. Next up, item E1, Continued Public Hearing. Any questions on that? E2, Removal Fee Restrictions. These two are linked. E3, does that want change?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I wanted Richard to give you guys a little bit more background. There were some.
Oh, sure.
There were some members of the public who had come to the P&amp;Z meeting with some comments and I wanted him to give us some background.
Great, thank you, Richard.
Yes, those residents had concerns about traffic on Josie Lane, which is built to accommodate very high traffic volumes and a lot of that traffic is coming from other areas, not just Lewisville. But they also had concerns about just the loss of open space generally in that area. But to give you a little bit of background on this property, the school district owns this and they'll be developing the new middle school, the northern part. But they are, you know, the southern part is extra property they don't need for that school. So they put that out to bid and staff received numerous meetings and inquiries from developers for multifamily. And of course, staffs, you know, pretty much told, gave them a hard no on that. They would not, staff would not support that, but there was an extreme amount of interest. We feel very, very fortunate to have a developer come forth to do residential. That is what come, that was the message that we wanted to drive home. If we really wanted, residential would be the highest and best use based on the current needs and based on our long-range plans here in Lewisville. We were even prepared for maybe even, you know, some townhomes in the development, but we did want there to be a good number of single family and that's what's coming forward. There's also a tremendous amount of parkland being dedicated. They're dedicating over nine acres of public parkland and then there will be about nine acres of private open space that'll have a recreation easement on top of that, that we can run future trails. This development will also be set back about 350 feet from Josie because of the location of the creek that feeds into Indian Creek. So it'll have the, you know, the feel of being more open and it won't be as tight as some of the other subdivisions in that area. About 38% of the development is going to be dedicated to open space. So they're providing a lot of infrastructure, a lot of amenities of, you know, along with these 135 homes. So without even going to answer any questions.
I had a question because I, so this is, the proposed zoning is the estate townhouse residential, but did I see somewhere that it said that the lots are going to be 50 feet wide?
Yes.
Okay, so why, the product looks more like just a regular, single-family home because they're detached too. So why is this not just SF designation? What's the difference?
Of course, always in NEPD, we have to have a base district and that ETH does give a little bit more flexibility, kind of more closely resembles what they're doing, particularly throughout the majority of that subdivision. Again, it's really the concept that's attached that drives what's being built. I think a good comparison would be Castle Hills. A lot of those neighborhoods are, have the base district of ETH. It's just, it's a common, commonly used base district for a lot of neighborhoods for that type of product.
Okay, I was just curious if it has something to do with the dimensions of the lots or some reason, because it looks like a single-family residential home.
Yeah, it's just a little bit better fit for what they're proposing.
Okay.
Any other questions for Richard? Sounds like, sounds like a really great product. Item 3. All good. Consent agenda, minutes. Item G5, Economic Development with Western Tech Systems. This was discussed in council back, I think in September-ish timeframe. We got first look at that, so. Item 6, Occupational Health Services. Item 7, Joint Election Services. Item 8, Multiple Use Agreement with the city and tech staff regarding our block safety cameras. Interesting, I was talking with Season, the tech staff representative for this area. They were actually having, they were grumbling because the rules on their roads, they can't retain information on their cameras. So it was an interesting conversation that they're trying to figure that out, specifically NTTA. Part of that was that they can't retain the camera information. So there's definitely a collaboration.
This is very important, very important. I love me some flock.
Say that five times fast.
I love me some flock.
H9, Alternative Standards Regarding Setbacks, Layouts, Driveway Locations and Streetscape for Proposed Commercial Building.
This is what we discussed earlier.
I was going to say, Richard, I appreciate in this packet that you put all of the developments together on one. Because I was reading the text and I was trying to figure out how.
And you're trying to visualize it.
I really appreciate the visual, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 10, Amending the Fee Schedule. And this is the follow-through on all of the garbage collection conversations we've been having. Item 11, Second Reading of the Solid Waste Collection Disposable Grant. Those two kind of walk in parallel. We have our quarterly investment report as part of the packet information, so if you want to see how that information is going. Council and staff reports. Do we have any closed session?
Yes, sir.
So no closed session at this time. There are no other questions or comments regarding the agenda. We're going to go ahead and move on to item B, Food Insecurity Funding and Proposed Grant to Boys and Girls Club of Greater Tarrant County. Ashley Farin is going to present.
Ashley.
So, little history going back to 2021. Staff presented to council the plethora of funding that was coming in during the response to COVID, but we were noticing some gaps in that funding specifically for mortgage assistance for residents that were above the 80% area median income, mental health services and food insecurity. So, and then in 2022, we came back and said, okay, we'd like to partner with United Way for mortgage assistance and then Luton County MHMR and Co here on the mental health services. So during all this time, we have also been trying to figure out ways to utilize this food insecurity funding for Serve Lewisville specifically, something that came, one of the reasons Serve Lewisville brought a study that was done by SMU in February of 2023, showing that there was a countywide meal gap of over 22.5 million pounds of food, just in Dinton County alone. So food insecurity is a huge need here, so we really wanted to make sure that we were supporting our food insecure residents while also supporting Serve Lewisville. Here's a quick map. These are the current food pantries here in Lewisville. The green ones are our physical locations that have set hours or they have it by appointment. Our purple pins are our little free pantries that our Youth Action Council did, as well as the San Pac Ford, they have a free pantry at their location. And then the blue ones are churches that are what are called mobile food pantries or they're drive-through, they're once a month. And so just wanted to show you how they're spread out around the city. You will notice that Salvation Army and Serve Lewisville are across the street from each other, but they're going to balance each other out with different hours. So it'll help fill that need in the evening hours, Serve Lewisville will provide that service.
I have a question. And this is with the Boys and Girls Club. We, we have an underserved population of our seniors and they cannot make it to the food, a lot of them can't, to the food pantries. It's like, how do, will this be able to help, well, again.
Yes, so even though.
We need to get ways to serve them.
Yeah, so even though Boys and Girls Club is proposed to manage the food pantry at Serve Lewisville, it will be for everyone. So finding transportation is definitely something that our senior group, we talk about every time we meet with them. So go zone and working through that with them, making sure that we can find them transportation for sure. So Serve Lewisville, as a reminder, there are five priorities, rent and utilities, mental health, childcare, healthcare and food. So they opened their doors in July of 2023. Food pantry was there, it was stocked with food from the Tarrant Area Food Bank. Served in provided the refrigeration in that food pantry. And we originally thought that it would be managed by volunteers from a local church, but the capacity of those volunteer groups to run, manage a food pantry just wasn't there. So we looked for other opportunities to manage that food pantry. So Boys and Girls Club has been in Serve Lewisville from day one. They have had a successful program and outreach into our community and they submitted a proposal to operate this food pantry in Serve Lewisville. In Tarrant County during the pandemic, they had to close down a few of their club houses. So instead of just not serving those populations, they reopen them as food pantries. So they have that experience of managing a food pantry and they're called Blue Door Markets. And so they would utilize the current staff that's already there full-time at Serve Lewisville. They would do those evening hours where that is a gap in our community. All of our food pantries, unless they're the free little pantries, are open during the day. So this will be that evening hour, so working parents that can't make it during the day, they come at night. So their funding request is for one-year lease and then also the remainder would be for food specifically. So food would be purchased from retail grocery stores, farmers markets and other food sources that will supplement the food that is received from the food banks because that's a specific type of food that you're going to get from the food bank. So let's look at other types of foods. And also, like I said, they would be serving residents outside of just their clients. Anyone that walks into Serve Lewisville, they would serve. So we're recommending to provide these food insecurity gap funding to Boys and Girls Club to operate the Blue Door Market at Serve Lewisville.
So we obviously didn't want to start negotiating anything and go through all that work without having a touch point with council, so just wanted to see what y'all's thoughts were on that.
It's very much needed and it's still not enough.
It's a great win-win.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Item C, Backyard Cotages Analysis. We've got Michelle Berry and Neighborhood Services Manager Ashley Farin presenting again.
Welcome, council. So just to kind of refresh your memory on backyard cottages. So before the Unified Development Code, you had to have a special use permit and you had to have quite a large lot, larger than most lots in Lewisville in order to do an accessory dwelling unit or a backyard cottage. We had quite a few discussions as we were adopting the Unified Development Code about relaxing the regulations on backyard cottages and allowing them by right in more zoning districts with supplemental standards. And that's what was originally adopted for the UDC in December 1st of 2022. Kind of a reminder of what some of those supplemental standards are is it cannot be taller than the main dwelling, it cannot be a temporary structure, must be on a permanent foundation. The size is limited to between 400 square feet as a minimum and 800 square feet or half the size of the main dwelling as a maximum. You can't exceed your zoning maximum lot coverage, which does vary by zoning district. It does have to have its own parking space that cannot be tandem or contiguous to the main driveway. The design does have to be compatible with the main building. There's only one per lot. The owner does have to live somewhere on the property, whether it's the cottage or the main dwelling unit. It cannot be sold separately because it's not its own lot. And it does have to be located behind the main dwelling. It does have to have at least 10 feet of separation from the main dwelling and be five feet from any lot line. In addition, those setbacks a little bit larger if it's on a corner lot. So just kind of want to refresh your memory on those standards that we talked quite about because we want to make sure that they were still compatible with the communities that they were in. So since then, we've done a lot to try to encourage backyard cottages. We had a pattern book that was designed by UTA. We had the Housing Toolkit Analysis. We've got a website that's up to inform interested homeowners about how they could go about building one if that's something that they're interested in. And we've launched a pre-approved design program. We're still waiting to get some of those pre-approved designs up and running, but that's another resource for residents where they could take that design. They still do have to get it tailored to their specific property. We need a site plan, we need to know where it's going and we need some things that are specific to each unit, but that hopefully would be another tool to kind of help promote it within the community. But we haven't had any built yet. So I'm going to go through some of the results from the pattern book analysis and what our next steps are. So in the pattern book analysis, we focused primarily on R75 zoning. And the reason we did this is because it's the smallest district where they're allowed by right. It's also the predominance of single-family zoning in Lewisville is R75. And so we looked at R75 and we looked by types, which generally correspond to the decades in which they were built. So if we look at our type 1, this is homes that were primarily built in the 1970s and you can see this is a block up here on the screen. So this is a street on the south, a street on the north and an alley that runs down the middle. And these purple polygons represent the area in which you could put a backyard cottage based on the lot configuration today and the setbacks today. And so you can see in this block of 1970s development where there's an alley, but everyone's front yard is where their garage is, so those alleys are really underutilized. A lot of these homes, most of them, could actually fit a backyard cottage if that was something that they desired. When we move up to the 1980s, we still have alleys. Now, a lot of these homes are actually using the alley for their access and you can see the home footprints increased in size quite a bit. What that does is it means that maybe just over a third of homes on this 1980s block can actually fit a backyard cottage. And then just for reference, these blue squares indicate pools, swimming pools. So you can't, you can't use that space for backyard cottage anymore, but that's what the blue is. And then as we move along into the 90s, it's very similar in terms of its pattern. In this one, you see this doesn't have an alley. That started to become more popular in the 90s, it's just having front entry with no alley. And that does make it a little bit more challenging, but you can see that these, this particular block, about half of the lots could potentially fit a backyard cottage if that's something they wanted to. What you have to be careful of with this configuration is making sure that you can get that driveway access for that extra parking space that's required. So looking at those constraints, there's a lot of lots that could potentially have backyard cottage, but it gets a little bit more nuanced when you get into the dimensions and the shapes that they have available to them. We do however, know that of the single-family homes, about 81% are owner-occupied, so that does eliminate 19% that are investor-driven since the owner does have to live on-site. And I know that was a big thing that council talked about when we originally went through this. I think the biggest challenge right now is just the affordability and keeping the construction costs to about $150 per square foot, especially with construction costs that have been just constantly rising and with interest rates where they are right now. And so trying to make it affordable and desirable for homeowners is really, I think, the biggest challenge. So UTA did put out some recommendations, which was to address affordability and could allow the backyard cottages or the accessory dwelling units to potentially be attached or to be a garage conversion. Just for reference, a standard two-car garage is about 400 square feet. It's about 20 by 20. That doesn't eliminate the requirement that the home have garage and parking. You would still have to figure out maybe you're building a detached garage, which is a little bit cheaper than a backyard cottage and enclosing your garage space. So that could potentially be an option that addresses that. Or it could be that if your dimensions are not quite right, you can build an accessory unit that's attached to the main structure, still smaller, still subordinate too. But if you don't have those setbacks, it's not quite outworking out for you, it might be more feasible that way. Another thought was to reduce the minimum square footage to maybe 200 or 300 square feet. Again, 200 square feet is like a single-car garage, that's pretty small. And talking to architects, they thought 300 to 330 is really the smallest that they could get a one-bedroom backyard cottage within, but it's still smaller than the 400 that we have on the books today. Consider reducing or eliminating the setbacks along alleyways. The reason we have the five-foot setback is because per building code, once you're within 10 feet, there's additional standards for windows, doors, fire separation. So we want to make sure everything's five feet from a property line so that the adjacent property owner can have the same rights as every other property owner. Along an alley, we've got the alley separation, so that's not as much of a concern. We still do want a little bit of a setback from an alley though, I'd say as a staff member. Consider in transit-connected areas, reducing the parking requirements. However, when we look at our transit-connected areas, it's higher density. It's not areas where we have single-family with backyard cottages, so it's probably not going to be that effective. Consider allowing more creative parking options, like a parallel parking space off an alley for backyard cottage, if that's an underutilized alley and that might be appropriate. They also raised the idea of permitting a long-term backyard cottage rentals on properties that are not owner-occupied. And I know that was something that the council was expressly concerned about. And I will say of the inquiries that staff has received for backyard cottages, it has been to either stick an RV as a temporary structure in the back, which we've said, no, that's, that's not acceptable, or it has been by an investor, because I think they're the ones that have the wherewithal and the funds to go ahead and make that investment. And then also to consider waiving permitting fees and expediting applications, but again, that's such a small portion of the overall cost. It might be helpful, but I'm not sure that it would really make the difference for a lot of folks.
Just wanted to point out real quick, in our Housing Toolkit, listed out issues by homeowner, renter, economic ability. And so one of the issues that was pointed out was that homeowners, investors are not building ADUs. And some potential solutions, these are opportunities, looking at the insights from UTA Pattern Book to the Foster Development and Homeowner Handbooks and then also revisiting that homeowner occupancy requirement.
So we do have a backyard cottage web page, and so you can go to this through the Planning Department page and it'll scroll down, it'll walk you through what the supplemental standards are. You can look up your property on the map. It has contacts for staff. It also has some very basic information about how you might approach a bank or a lending institution if you needed to get some sort of loan product to build it, just kind of some outlines of what some of the key products that are available to people are right now. And so that's a tool that's out there for folks if they are interested in a backyard cottage. And we have launched the Pre-approved Design Program. We've got the materials established, we've reached out to architects, there's a couple that have responded back and are hopefully going to submit designs. And in addition, since we weren't getting as many as we hoped, we began pulling pre-approved designs that are publicly available from ADUs. This one's from the San Antonio area and so we're working on just getting this through our internal review process so we can put this out on the website as a, as a pre-approved design. This backyard cottage, just for reference, comes with two different roof options, so you could do it either way depending on how it best fits the character of your neighborhood. It also does measure 24 feet by 24 feet, so it's a nice square and it's about 576 total square feet. It does have a separate living room, dining room, kitchen and bedroom, although they don't have a wall through the bedroom, so it's kind of like one big U-shaped space, but it is a fairly good amount of space.
Michelle, how long is the, how long do you have to open for the call for designs?
So with this, it's, there's no closed date, so it's kind of a rolling. As things come in, we'll add them.
And if a council member is interested in having a particular architect submit, they're welcome to talk to them and just let them know.
Please, if you have some architects, please send them my way. I'm happy to answer any questions they have.
I already did.
Oh, wonderful.
Well, I reached out to them. We'll see if they want to come back.
So we're kind of looking at what are next steps to sort of help promote backyard cottages and make them more available. We're looking at design competitions, maybe continuing that partnership with UTA and possibly amending some of those regulations to try and make these more achievable for folks. So in terms of a design competition, the goal of this would really be to increase awareness and support in the community. And we use, we're applying for an AARP grant to get some funding for that design competition. With Ashley's team, they're really looking to charge on that application for us. But what we would do is we'd have different categories and we'd encourage elementary school students to participate, in different age groups to participate and would be categories for accessible, sustainable, those types of things. We'd like to even include it as part of our parades in the community by our Parade EU, where we basically put a mock-up of a backyard cottage, which would essentially be a shed-type structure on a parade float to just sort of just promote it out into the community. So we're applying for that grant opportunity and again, that's more focused on building awareness that this is an option for people.
In addition, just wanted to really quick point out, we also apply for pathways to removing obstacles to housing, pro-housing. This was a $10 million grant application that we submitted to HUD back in October. We're still waiting to hear from them, but part of that was $3 million specifically to creating backyard cottages. This would be funding to actually construct those backyard cottages. We would be prioritizing our seniors to live in those cottages to create that affordable housing for them. We also want to prioritize our low-to-matter-income homeowners as well to work through that, but we're still waiting to hear back on that award.
Obviously, you can tell this is a big, staff is really taking this to heart, that this is a diversity of housing stock that we're trying to promote as well as affordable housing, aging-in-place and all of those types of initiatives that councils are interested in.
It works, I got one.
They can, people that have them seem to love that.
I have an acre. My shop, I have an acre or something.
And I don't think you need half an acre to make it work, but it certainly gives you more flexibility when you have a large lot. So looking at continuing that partnership with UTA Architecture, they have different studio classes that do different works and in theory, we can partner with their studio classes to actually develop a backyard cottage. So what they do then with their studio classes is they design it in the fall, they permit it over the winter break and they work on construction in the spring and summer. Obviously, we have to find a participating homeowner and I'm still waiting to get with them on exactly where the funding for that comes from, if there would need to be any support from us or if that's primarily the homeowner that's having it built. And then they're basically covering some of those design costs because it's student work, so.
It's like, how would you do that selection process?
Oh, selection, I mean, I think we would make it available and they can reach out to UTA themselves and let UTA make that decision.
Yes. And so then the discussion of potential code amendments with staff would maybe want to consider amending in the code if we get to this step is to reduce the minimum size. And I would be honestly comfortable with 300 square feet because it gets really tough to design anything that's much smaller than that. And again, 300 square feet is about three-quarters of a two-car garage, just for a point of reference. It feels a lot bigger though than your garage does, you know, walls and break it up a little bit. I think the configuration is one of those things that could really address the affordability if they could be allowed in converted garages because you already have a structure there. In some cases, you have utilities and things that are pretty close, so that's a potential. Or to allow them just to be attached to the home structure, which does open up flexibility if your yard wouldn't otherwise allow a detached one. To reduce or remove those, reduce really those setbacks from the alley, to allow that parallel parking space and then potentially waive permitting fees if that's something we wanted to do to really promote backyard cottages.
I have a question. So we're talking about, I'm with you on the remove or reduce setbacks from alleys, but we still, we're still proposing the, holding the lot coverage?
We would still.
Because it looks like on these pattern book, it doesn't look like, surely with those red pieces, that exceeds the lot coverage.
So it depends on the zoning district. Some lot coverages go up pretty high, 40% is a common one. And we could potentially look at increasing the lot coverage a little bit, but that was not something that UTA found was really holding anyone back in terms of being able to build a backyard cottage.
Okay, and so then my next question, this is going to be a little, sorry, I apologize for this. So.
Oh, come on.
Oh, boy. So if, I'm all about encouraging backyard cottage, I mean, I want one, you know, for either an aging parent or a college kid who's not going to be able to afford to go get his own place, you know, for a while. So he, oh, I'm talking about my child when we get there. But, but, okay, so this relates to the drainage ordinance. If we have everybody building backyard cottages and we've got much greater impervious surface in our residential areas, that impacts drainage.
There you are.
So have we looked at how that impacts drainage? One, in our existing storm sewer systems and two, our drainage fees, you know, we have like a flat rate for residential, but that assumes a certain density, right? But we're going to be increasing the impact there.
It's actually just based on the square footage of the homes.
Of the home, of the impervious cover on the lot that we've been increasing.
It's based on, it's based on a average square footage. So if you start.
If everyone built it, it might shift the average, but that would assume everything average.
Yeah, and so I only ask that not to get an answer on that right now, but just something to think about. And I, I really appreciate just looking at. And I, I really appreciate just looking at this and saying, how do we get people to actually use this? I, I do believe that one of the biggest things working against everybody doing it right now, we kind of allowed it to happen as soon as the prices shot through the roof. So I like to think, you know, some of that will sort itself out once, you know, things come back down and our interest rates get reasonable and, but I, I, yeah, I just want to think about possible long-term impacts, not that that's a yes or no deal, but just something to think about as we start to look at this and how, if we get more and more, we might want to look at addressing that. I have no problem with reducing the size to 300 square feet. If it's attached, I mean, I'm fine with that, too. Wouldn't that just be an addition?
So sometimes it could be considered an addition if there's pass-through between the two units, but sometimes they like to not have any connection between the two living areas.
That's the kind of power, yeah. Okay, so I got really nervous when I saw the potentially converted garages, but the caveat there is that they would have to, they would have to construct another garage.
Yeah, so our code minimum is you have to, in our R75 zoning district, it's one garage space plus two additional paved spaces. And most people, most homes, it was common to build a two-car garage in the 80s and 90s anyway, a two-car garage with two parking spaces in front of it.
Okay, but then this would also increase, if you did an accessory dwelling unit, you would have to increase the parking space as well, right?
Yes, yes, so not only would you have to replace the garage space that was lost, you would have to make sure that you have the three for the original home, plus the additional one for the backyard cottage. And the backyard cottage one cannot be tandem or anyways, that it could be blocked by the, they couldn't block each other in.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I think that answers my question.
Other comments?
I just, I wouldn't go lower than 300 square feet. I have a question on the permanent foundation, slab or pier and beam?
Either way.
Okay.
So with the building permit, they do have to have an engineered foundation plan.
Oh, yes.
So, and that's one of the things that we can't pre-approve, right? That has to be law specific.
Other questions? Comments?
Here are none, I'll ask one. The pattern book, with the, did they just pick a couple of sample streets and neighborhoods, or did they do the whole city?
We drove through the city a bunch one day, and we drove through a lot of different neighborhoods in the city. We did, for the purposes of the illustrations, pick a couple of blocks that were representative samples of each of those different decades of construction.
I love the visibility that says, man, I could do this, that that would create.
Yeah, we did not do that for every street.
Yeah, I can imagine that that would be a nightmare to do unless there was some automated tool that did that, so, okay.
One quick question, so on the foundation, so that, so do you have to hire a structural engineer for this?
Did you, and so the way that that typically works is a homeowner would, if they're using, like, say, our pre-approved design that's out there, they would have to get a structural engineer to stamp the foundation plan. But a lot of times, they're connected to that engineer through the contractor that they choose, it's someone that they've worked with in the past, or they can reach out to the architect that designed the plans and see if they can reach out to anyone through them, but they do have to do that as part of the building permitting process.
Can we, can I make a suggestion on that? Just like we're going to have kind of a few architectural partners in this, if we could get, because I know, I know.
An engineer partner, too?
Yeah, an engineer, like a structural engineer that I've had come out to my house repeatedly for my foundation, so, you know, those are, it's one of those, a lot of people don't have to have that, but if we could have a list of a few that, you know, we could say, hey, here's some people who do this.
I will, I'll look into see if there's a way that we can do that and still not be, you know, favoring an engineer or making, you know, I'll see if there's a way we can do that.
I just found there's not a whole bunch of them, like, because you don't want a foundation company to do it. Because they will give you a foundation that you do not want to pay for, and you don't need it either. So there are, what I have found, is there are really not a whole lot of people that do that work, that just design it and have no interest in doing it. So, just a thought.
Because normally, they're going to, normally, a structural is going to want a geotech report, so, I mean, are they going to go, is that somebody going to go that far, or are they going to?
I have to check with our building services team, but I don't think for single-family homes or those types of things, they typically go as far as a geotech report.
Not if they don't go up, yeah.
Okay. I think you've got some consensus around moving forward on most of these. I think I have similar concerns about the garage conversions, just because we've got a history of not wanting them, and so that does create a challenge, but if we can be really clear about it, and it fits more into the expansion of the home, or an addition to the home kind of concept, and it covers the parking, the last thing I want to do is create a parking headaches.
Correct, yes. Let, can I make sure I understand the direction? So then, 300 square foot, not 200, was what I'm hearing, and then also, we would allow them to be attached, but there's still concern about converting a garage space.
Right, yes. I mean, unless they build another garage. As long as they, as long as the requirement is that they have to replace the lost garage space, then I'm fine with converting a garage. Right.
What is it, I want to make sure.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
That's fine, but if you, are you saying, if you have a two-car garage, you have to replace the two-car space, or just go to the minimum requirement?
It would just be, right now, I'm thinking it's the minimum, so what I was hearing was that you would just have to, you have to have a minimum of one space enclosed.
Plus two.
Plus two.
Or you want something different.
You have to have four spaces, one enclosed.
I think, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, is that if the requirement is just one enclosed space, but they already have two, that we're losing something, right?
Well, I was, I was actually thinking of my house.
Oh, okay.
What happened if I would do it, I was trying to think what, how I would handle that.
I mean, I, if it were my house, I would probably want to replace both garage spaces, but I think the requirement should just be what our standard requirement is.
I do, yeah.
One, one comment before we go, parking, parallel parking on the alley, some of our alleys, that would be a nightmare for our trash services.
And this is honestly something that I need to work through with the engineering department.
I'm not crazy about that at all.
I, I don't, I think for the right alley, it might work, or for the right home with a flare somewhere, there's some opportunity there, but those, I'm just, I'm just going to advocate for our trash drivers, for those guys. Those guys are miracle workers with those vehicles sometimes, and so that one would have to be really, really closely vetted.
And we can look at maybe just being a little bit more flexible, as opposed maybe being parallel.
I mean, people are already parking the cul-de-sacs all every which way, so. All right, I appreciate the feedback, it's good stuff. Thank you for moving forward with trying to figure out how to make this work. All right, we are done, we will move into regular sessions. Call this regular session of the Lewisville City Council order, we do have a quorum. First up on the agenda tonight is the invocation with Councilmember Cade.
Could you stand with me, please? While we come together as a governing body tonight, Lord, I ask that you graces with enlightened hearts and minds to make sound and fair and just decisions for the citizens of Lewisville. Thank you, Lord, for all of our city council, I mean, all of our city employees and their hard work and sacrifice that they do on a daily basis, keeping our great city running very smoothly and keeping us safe. May you continually protect them and bless them. Give our mayor, city leaders, staff, and city council the wisdom and discernment over all issues and deliberations before us tonight. And let us take this time to lift up the family of the contractor that was tragically killed on Friday, and let us also remember Charlie Correll, a past Lewisville City Council member and founding board member of DCTA, who passed away yesterday, and it's in your name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under thy eye, one and indivisible. Well, I know most of us sitting in this room are tired of the drama of elections. What we are not tired of is the drama of our Lewisville High School Theater. If I could have them join us up here, we are going to proclaim theater in our Schools Month, so I see some shirts, come on, come on. Got to have a photo, at least. All right, so this is a proclamation by the City Council of the City of Lewisville, and whereas theater education enriches the lives of countless students in our schools and allows them to discover their myriad skills and abilities in leadership, communication, and collaboration, unlocking their unlimited potential, and whereas theater is a critical component of the learning process and develops students' creativity, self-discipline, problem-solving, and critical thinking abilities, and whereas research indicates that students with more theater education have higher academic achievement across the curriculum, the importance of theater education is recognized as being necessary for the full development of all students, and whereas theater on our Schools Month is a special opportunity for our community to engage in the ongoing process of theater education and to bring heightened awareness of the importance of the arts in education. Now therefore I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize the month of March 2024 as theater in our Schools Months in Lewisville, Texas, and urge all residents to observe the occasion with the appropriate ceremonies, activities, and maybe go see a play. Let's give them a hand. Um, Zep, Zep Kenner? Zep? Would you, you have a few words?
Oh, yes, I do.
All right.
Thank you for your recognition and your support in this month. We, as the Lewisville High School Theater, think that art in our schools, not just theater, but music, dance, performance arts, visual arts, is all something that everybody should be free to partake in, whether creating or just watching and enjoying and being with, coming together, and even if it's not creating, just sitting and enjoying, we invite you to come out to any of our shows, and as we, one of our big things this year is to reach out to the greater community at large, beyond Lewisville High School, but Lewisville City and the Lewisville area as well. So if you feel like you would like to see a play, especially this month, Monday, March 18th, we actually are perform, have a public performance of our competition one-act play called Juridacy by Sarah Rule. We would like to invite anybody to come out and see, and follow us, and follow us on our journey, and reaching out to our larger communities as a whole. Thank you very much for your recognition and your support. Thank you.
You guys can stay for the rest of council, because leadership is important. I know, I know how this works. And if I could have the Badgcombe family. So first of all, we've got a young man here who is about to earn or has earned his Eagle Scout, and regardless of what you know about Eagle Scouts, this is a family lift, it's not just you, I'm sorry, I know it's everybody up here. So I happen to have two Eagles in my household, I was a Life Scout, that's part of, part of where it is, but I wanted to give some recognition, so congratulations to Raiden Leon Badgcombe on receipt of his Eagle Scout Award. The Lewisville City Council would like to recommend Raiden's hard work and leadership, earning three additional merit badges above his Eagle Scout project, and earning the bronze pal in scouting. Raiden has been above the top producers in popcorn sales for several years, which has earned him a scholarship, and he is currently a senior at Flowermount High School, and will also be traveling to Europe for spring break with his classmates with funds he has earned working part-time. Raiden is aspiring to be an executive chef and looking forward to attending college in either Texas or Illinois, and I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of Lewisville, on behalf of the City Council, wish you the best in all your future endeavors. Congratulations. Good show. You're growing big in the house. So, well, great job, guys, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting up with him. All right, next up, forgot my library, there we are, you just going to sit there? No, I need you up here, come on. One of my favorite teams. We have the presentation of the Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award. It's open to TMLDA member library directors and the libraries that they represent, and to receive the Achievement of Library Excellence Award, the library must support standards of excellence in over 10, in 10 categories. Carolyn, I think you have a few words?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to thank the library team, thank you, Mayor and Council and city management for your support. Also, thank you to our residents for supporting library services and my fellow directors that are here today. So as the mayor mentioned, this is a 10-point system to apply for, and all the people that I brought forward here today were instrumental in applying for and achieving that award. So I brought three examples today to talk about. One of the categories is staff development, and we achieved excellence in, in supporting our staff development last year with our Staff Development Day that we held in February of 2023. Another one is educational, cultural, and classes, and we achieved excellence in a library program in 2023, that, of course, in lots of programs in 2023. The sample that we applied with was our Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros program, which we celebrate now every April, and that is a celebration of children, reading, and families, and Lauren helps a lot with that program. The final, finally example that I wanted to bring up today was collaboration with outside entities, and the Lewisville Library demonstrated excellence in that, in our partnership with Keep Lewisville Beautiful, with, for our seed library, and Stormy was instrumental in getting that going for us. And we also have Renee Kirchner here today, and she helped with our application in working, and we talked about our literacy learning initiatives and our Welcome Baby program. I also wanted to mention, we have a couple library board members here in the House today that came to celebrate us from the crowd, but thank you for celebrating libraries with us today, and we will continue to strive for excellence in 2024.
Made that in the makers' space, see, this is the cool thing about our library, it's just, it's a living space. All right. All right, next up. I knew it. No, it's okay, it really is, I totally get it. Love you guys, love our schools, they do such a great job. All right. E1, public hearing, continued public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from Warehouse District to Light Industrial District on 1.029 acres, being a portion of Riverview Industrial Park, Block A, Lot 11R1, located on the south side of Stonewall Drive, approximately 200 feet west of Hufines Boulevard, as requested by Paul Bartel, Half Associates Incorporated, on behalf of Prologis Exchange, TX2004 LLC, the property owner, case 231218Z. In 2011, the property was rezoned from Light Industrial District to Warehouse District for a proposed storage facility, which was never built. The applicant is requesting a zone change from Warehouse District back to Light Industrial District to facilitate the development of a business park. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval five to nothing of the zone change request on February 6, 2024. On February 20th, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to remove a deed restriction, limiting the use of the property, and recommended unanimous approval six to nothing. On February 19th, 2024, the City Council continued the public hearing for the zone change to, to the March 4, 2024 City Council meeting to consider both requests at the same time, in the same meeting. It's recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth. forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Ludke, our Planning Director, available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. I do have Mr. Paul Bartel representing the owners. He is here and available for questions as well. Council, if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion to close the public hearing. And a second, council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Council, entertain, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council, amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 1.029 acres of land, legally described as a portion of Lot 11R1 in Block A, Riverview Industrial Park, located south of Stonewall Drive, approximately 166 feet west of Houghines Boulevard, from Warehouse WH District zoning to Light Industrial LI District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer, severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five, nothing. E2, Public Hearing. Consideration of the removal of deed restrictions contained within document number 2012-3565 on 1.029 acres, being a portion of Riverview Industrial Park, Block A, Lot 11R1, located on the south side of Stonewall Drive, approximately 200 feet west of Houghines Boulevard, as requested by Paul Bartel, Half Associates Incorporated, on behalf of Prologis Exchange, TX 2004 LLC, the property owner. During the review of the zone change request for the subject property, deed restrictions on the use of the property were discovered that need to be removed to facilitate the development of a proposed business park on the site. These restrictions were put in place shortly after rezoning the subject property from Light Industrial District zoning to Warehouse District zoning in 2011, and were specific to the development proposed at the time. The deed restrictions state that City Council action through the public hearing process is required to amend or remove the deed restrictions. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval six to nothing on February 20th, 2024, and it is recommended that the City Council approve the removal of the deed restrictions as set forth in the caption above. We do have Richard Ludke, our Planning Director, available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. If there are no comments or questions, council, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the removal of the deed restrictions.
Move to approve the deed restrictions, restrictions, apologies.
The removal of?
The removal of the deed restrictions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 3, Public Hearing. Consideration of an Ordinance granting a zone change from public use District zoning to planned development estate townhouse residential district on 47.641 acres of land out of the RF Harden survey, abstract number 613, the D Cook survey, abstract number 234, the TA West survey, abstract number 1345, and the B Schoonover survey, abstract number 1209, located on the east side of Josie Lane, approximately 3,000 feet south of Windhaven Parkway, as requested by Patricia Font McAdams, on behalf of Louisville Independent School District, the property owner, 23-10-8-PZ. The subject site lies east of Josie Lane, across from Memorial Elementary School and the Lakewood Hills Development. The property is currently owned by the Louisville Independent School District, who intends to sell the southern portion for a residential subdivision and retain the northern portion for a future middle school. The applicant is proposing a rezoned, a rezoning to planning, planned development estate townhouse residential to build a new single-family detached neighborhood. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval five to nothing on February 6, 2024, and is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Richard Ludke, our Planning Director, is available for questions, and the public hearing is now open.
Mayor, I'd like Richard to just go over briefly what you went over with us in the workshop.
Yes, the, this entire site was owned by LISD, as the mayor bred in the caption or in the administrative comments. The northern piece will be retained for a school, and when the LISD went out for proposals for the southern half to sell, staff had received numerous meeting requests and inquiries from multifamily developers. And of, of course, staff's reply to all of them was, was definitely, that it was something that staff could not support and carry forward to City Council and did not meet the city's long-range plans for the area. We were very happy that a single-family developer moved forward. Staff feels that that's the highest and best use for that area, and it complements surrounding neighborhoods. Some concerns at P&amp;Z brought up by several of the speakers was increased traffic on Josie, which Josie Lane is a, a major arterial in this whole region of the metroplex, six-lane divided road, and it does, designed to carry very high traffic volumes, and it does carry a lot of traffic from outside of Louisville. It's really a major, like I said, a thoroughfare connecting major parts of the metroplex. And as far as other concerns were just the lack of parkland in the area and open space, several of residents were disappointed to see more open space going away. Fortunately, like I said, we are happy that the, that development will be single-family homes, and because the property does contain a segment of Indian Creek, about little over nine acres will be dedicated to the city as parkland. That will accommodate a major regional hike and bike trail that is on our, our long-range plans. But there will also be approximately nine acres of private open space that will have a recreational easement on it that will give us the ability to put additional public trails to connect various portions and, and up to the school and connect the school with various neighborhoods in that area. Overall, I believe the site is approximately about 38% open space. Another factor, the fact that the tributary of, of Indian Creek kind of runs parallel to Josie Lane, the subdivision itself will be about 350 feet back from Josie. So you will have ample open space at the front of the subdivision from Josie Lane. So I think that will, will address some of the concerns that the residents had at the P&amp;Z meeting.
Richard, I also, I think I read somewhere in here that there's still part, there will be probably be a traffic study required in the next, but so this is just to clarify that this is just zoning?
Correct.
And that the next phase will include a traffic analysis, which will hopefully address some of the traffic concerns.
Yes, that'll be required with the planning, planning phase of the development.
Okay.
There are no further comments or questions. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, I move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council, amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 47.641 acres of land out of the RF Harden survey, abstract number 613, the D Cook survey, abstract number 234, the TA West survey, abstract number 1345, and the B Schoonover survey, abstract number 1209, located on the east side of Josie Lane, approximately 3,000 feet south of Windhaven Parkway, from public use PU District zoning to planned development estate townhouse residential PDETH District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all of the portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer, severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item F, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Do you have any public comment?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to wait until these speakers are on the item.
Gotcha, okay. Super. Mr. Law, if you don't mind, I'm going to have you posted for H10.
It's my pleasure to say good evening to all of you, the mayor and the councilmen and staff. My name is Nancy Sansom. I'm a frequent, frequent visitor here at your meetings, and I enjoy a chance to share with you what's going on with the senior population of Louisville. I reside at 415 South Garden Ridge Road at the Evergreen at Louisville Senior Community for six years. We represent Louisville Senior Living Challenges Organization, or as our back of our T-shirts say, seniors, helping seniors. To express our unity, we are all wearing our symbolic blue shirts, and as you can see, a few in the back there. We are, we were very honored to have Gary Henderson, I know you all know Gary, CEO and President of United Way, at our February meeting last Thursday night. We had also delighted to have Brandon Jones and, I don't see William Meredith, or no, there he is. They also helped with technical problems we had. So we had a, we had a packed house of residents that Gary told us, United Way is working with possibilities of finding assistance, and if all works out in late March or April. Besides our rent, we were told that other communities have also raised their rent. So I don't know if you all are aware of that. Havens Independent Community raised theirs 300 a month, and Riverwalk down, down here, raised their rent 600 a month. And that's just a few. As the early baby boomers turn 78, the demand for senior housing will grow exponentially from 1.5 million units 2020 to 3.2 million units in 2040. If you look on your packets that were passed out to you, the front cover sort of delineates that, that growth, and it's truly shocking how much more housing we need. There are more than 10,000 baby boomers retiring every day. Denton County's need for senior housing will grow soon to 20.58% of the population, population of over a million population, I understand. Our meetings with the City Manager's Office have been very successful. With ongoing safety repairs, we were delighted to see the sidewalk repair people working on our sidewalks that many of us have been tripping on. So we were thrilled about that. We also have petitioned with the City Manager's Office for a safety zone to block U-turns on both sides of the street, caution signs, and a crosswalk that crosses Garden Ridge to the back entrance of the Tom Thumbstrut Mall. Crossing this street is very dangerous. I've personally seen one person kill her. As the credit goes to a fantastic mayor, City Council, Claire Powell, Ashley and Chris and her wonderful staff, it has just made a big difference in our lives. We feel like we can go in and sit down and have a wonderful discussion and ways we can work together, networking and things like that. Your combined effort has made a huge difference in Louisville seniors' quality of our lives. You have provided impatiently, month after month, listened to our concerns and our safety issues. You represent the best example of local city government I've ever seen, and who really care about their citizens and their welfare. And I thank you very much, and I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Item G, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be acted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the City Secretary. City Secretary, do we have any comment?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Council, unless there's anything to be polled, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Consent Agenda passes five to nothing. Item H9, Regular Hearing. Consideration of four alternative standards related to building, setbacks, parking, layout, driveway location, and streetscape for a proposed commercial building on 3.29 acre lot legally described as Blake C. Bowen Edition Block A Lot 2, located at the north side of Justin Road, FM 407, approximately 400 feet west of Interstate Highway 35E, zoned Light Industrial District as requested by Larry Kates on behalf of Louisville 407 and 35 Partnership, the property owner, case number 24022-ALTSTD. Speck's Family Partners Limited, Speck's Wines, Spirits, and Finer Foods, aka Speck's, is proposing a new retail building on the north side of Justin Road, FM 407. The following four alternative standards are requested to accommodate various easements on the property. A, to allow a 98-foot setback from the primary pedestrian street in lieu of the maximum 10 feet allowed, and a 95-foot setback from Justin Road, FM 407, in lieu of the maximum 80 feet allowed. B, to allow parking between the building and street. C, to allow driveways onto the primary pedestrian street. And D, to omit the streetscaping and sidewalk along the primary pedestrian street and place the required benches and bike racks along the eight-foot sidewalk along the building. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval six to nothing on February 20th, 2024. It's recommended that the City Council approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Mr. Richard Ludke, our Planning Director, available for questions. Richard, if you wouldn't mind kind of speaking to the unique aspects of this property and why we're, why we're P&amp;Z approve this?
This site is probably the prime candidate for why we do have alternative standards. It's a very challenging site. It is crisscrossed by multiple easements, not only access and fire lane easements, but water line easements, overhead power line easements, and a gas line easement. And some of those easements are going at a 45. So it's, it's made development very, very challenging, and with the I-35 overlay standards on top of that, very, very difficult. But staff worked very closely with the applicant, and we think this would be a great addition to the overall development of the area. And I think all of the standards are warranted. I think we've come up with a really good solution that will accommodate the development, but still meet the spirit and intent of the I-35 overlay.
There are no other questions or discussion, council?
I just want to make one comment. I remember this property a couple of years ago when we looked at this and what, what could have been there. So I appreciate the fact that we waited for the right fit for this property.
So I was just going to say, I do a fair amount of land planning in my day job. I don't know if the land planner for this project is here tonight, but kudos to you for figuring out. This is a lot, you know, this is a lot of restrictions. So I'm glad that we were, that the land planner was able to find some workable solutions with working with the city. So to, to make this property developable, otherwise it would be vacant. So with that, I just wanted to say kudos to the land planner. And with that, I'll motion to approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Passes five to nothing. Item H10, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Fee Schedule of the City of Louisville by amending fees related to solid waste and recycling services in the properties that were annexed into the city on November 15, 2021. The City Council approved an exclusive franchise agreement for solid waste and recycling collection and disposal with Republic Services for Legacy Louisville that became effective January 1, 2021. Following the annexation of the Castle Hills area, the city assumed an exclusive franchise agreement for residential solid waste and recycling collection and disposal with Community Waste Disposal, CWD. During the September 18, 2023 City Council Work Session, staff presented options for solid waste and recycling collection for the Castle Hills area. Subsequently, staff was directed to transition solid waste and recycling collection for the Castle Hills area to the Republic Services exclusive franchise agreement, making the service consistent throughout Louisville. Staff has negotiated a transition plan with CWD and Republic that considers challenges of both customers and providers in the Castle Hills area. CWD has informed staff that extending their service to January, that extending their service to January 31, 2025 will cause them to incur additional costs for trucks. To offset the additional costs, rates will be increased by $10, 10.3% effective April 3, 2024 as part of the proposed amendment impacting all- effective April 3, 2024, as part of the proposed amendment impacting all residential rates for the Castle Hills area. The average home having one trash cart and one recycle cart will see a monthly increase of $2.62 on their utility bill. Per the proposed amendment, this is the final rate adjustment for the CWD agreement. On February 1, 2025, the franchise will transfer to Republic Services, and the fees for the Castle Hills area will likely reduce at that time. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I do have one comment from Mr. Daniel Law.
Hey, Mayor. Good evening. I do have a question, I have an observation, and I have an opinion. So, I, you know, 10%, 2.6, you know, dollars, I think that's okay. The only question I have is, right, after February of 2025, they say the fee is going to be reduced. Do we expect the same two weeks' collection, or is it going to change? Because when you say reduce, at that time, do we see a reducing in service as well? That's my question. And then my observation about the collection, right? So, I think this kind of circle back to our city ordinance, Section 1223, regarding the collection schedule. So, currently, right, the ordinance talked about, right, the 7:00 AM is the collection day, and then they talk about the 24 hours prior is where you can put the trash out, and then you have 24 hours after the collection day, right? So, if you think about, right, you go from about 36 hours to about 60 hours, it's a long, right? You have, you think about our neighborhood, right? Our neighborhood has a lot of non-compliance. So, when I talk to the compliance officer with our HOA, we have the most violation last year. So, if you think about the ordinance and our neighborhood, right, we are front-facing garage neighborhood. So, we have a Tuesday and Friday collection day. With the ordinance reason, right, you have, you know, 24 hours prior and 24 hours after, right? So, a Tuesday collection day, we're going to have Monday, people put in at 7:00 AM, and then they might have all the way to midnight on Wednesday. But if you think about, we have a Friday collection day. So, that means people can put it on Thursday and then don't have to do it, don't have to remove until Saturday. So, in other words, right, you have an ordinance here that's difficult for people to enforce, right? People can do the loophole and then put it every day other than Sunday. But then, as we know, right, a lot of people don't work on Sunday. That means, you know, in the neighborhood, I talked about, right, the 10 minutes walking, you know, to a park or green space, right? So, when you think about this, right, if we continue to have a two collection day per week, right, you're going to see a neighborhood with a lot of trash in the neighborhood. We do, like I said, a violation, a lot of violation, right? People leave it on the street, people leave it in front of the neighborhood, right? Driveway, even our HOA do have rule about that, but it seems like they can't enforce it. And then they ask me, like, you know, if we get city involved and then, you know, city enforcement involved, that might be good. I know the other thing is, right, we have a visibility. We don't have a rule on visibility on the trash, right? What I mean is, we don't have a visibility from the front. When I look around the city, right, or around the metro products, like Arlington, Fort Worth, and some other city, even Carrollton, has some kind of regulation about, you know, regulation about trash not being visible from the front of the property. So, I don't think City of Louisville has that. So, I think, you know, that's something that they can look into to kind of make City of Louisville a better place to live, because, as I say, right, we walk the neighborhood a lot, and it's challenging to see a lot of trash in the neighborhood. So, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Danny. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll have staff clarify some of those questions for you. All right. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the fee schedule of the City of Lewisville by amending the residential trash and recycling collection rates that apply only to properties annexed into the city on November 15, 2021, providing a repealer, severability, and effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 11, Second Reading. Consideration of an Ordinance Setting forth the Second Attachment to the Solid Waste Collection and Disposal and Recyclable Materials Collection and Processing Agreement and the First Amendment to the Solid Waste Collection and Disposal and Recyclable Material Collection and Processing Agreement. The city council approved an exclusive franchise agreement for solid waste and recycling collection and disposal with Republic Services for Legacy Lewisville that became effective January 1, 2021. Following the annexation of the Castle Hills area, the city assumed an exclusive franchise agreement for residential solid waste and recycling collection and disposal with Community Waste Disposal, CWD. During the September 18, 2023 city council work session, staff presented options for solid waste and recycling collection for the Castle Hills area. Subsequently, staff was directed to transition solid waste and recycling collection for the Castle Hills area to the Republic Services exclusive franchise agreement, making the service consistent throughout Lewisville. Staff has negotiated a transition plan with CWD and Republic that considers challenges for both customers and providers in the Castle Hills area. The city charter requires that amendments to a franchise ordinance be read twice, 30 days apart, and go into effect no earlier than 30 days after the final reading. The first reading was approved on January 22, 2024. If approved on the second reading, the amendment will be effective on April 3, 2024. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Council, if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, setting forth the Second Amendment to Solid Waste Collection and Disposal and Recyclable Material Collection and Processing Agreement and the First Amendment to Solid Waste Collection and Disposal and Recyclable Material Collection and Processing Agreement, providing for severability, an effective date, and acceptance by Community Waste Disposal LP.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Reports. Councilmember Meredith? Before we, before I go through these, would you mind being first from the city council reports?
Sure.
All right. Do want to make a point that we do have our quarterly investment report from October 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023. That is in the supplemental material for council, and it's also available on the city website, so you can see how we're doing. All right, and with that, we'll move to city council reports. Councilmember Meredith?
First of all, I wanted to compliment staff on the Tri-City Neighborhood Summit. I thought that went off very well. Everything turned out great that day. Some library activities for the week. Elementary explorations for children aged 6 to 8, Thursday, March 7, 4:30 to 5:30. A ticket is required at the Bennett Program Room. Block printing for adults and teens, 16-plus. Thursday, March 7, 6 to 7:45 PM. Registration is required at the Hive Makerspace. Tag Teen Advisory Group for Teens Age 13 to 18, Thursday, March 7, 6:30 to 7:30. No registration required at Teen Point, second floor. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
First of all, ditto to what Councilmember Meredith said about the Tri-City Summit. It was very well done, and I learned a lot. I know I have a lot, a lot more to learn about gardening, so. Anyway, thanks, thanks to the staff and everyone involved. I have a number of items at the Grand Theater. First of all, the Texas Tunes Concert Series continues this Saturday night, March 9, with a concert by Del Castillo. Then, as always, on Friday night, there are the Acoustic Jam Sessions take place from 6 to 9. Additional activities, the Acoustic Friday Songwriting Challenge, presented by the City of Lewisville, will take place on March 8. That's Not Watercolor Workshop with Randy Meader, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, March 12 through the 14. Neighborhood Grant Workshop, presented by the City of Lewisville on March 19. And then Exhibitions, the Lewisville Middle Schools Exhibition, presented by the Lewisville Independent School District, taking place now March 3 through the 21st. And then Beauty and the Unexpected, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, March 9 through April 13. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
No report, Mayor.
Richard?
No report, Mayor.
Uh-oh. We got some hardscape to talk about.
Mayor, City Council, park fans, just wanted to give you a little bit update. The Parks and Recreation Department participated in the Texas Recreation and Parks Society Annual Institute last week in Galveston, and we brought home some stones from that event. We received a Maintenance Achievement Award, an Outstanding Educator of the Year Award, a Planning Excellence Award, and the Texas Gold Medal for Management of a Park System. And then a couple of the things that we weren't expecting. As I was walking in here, I was going to tell you more about each of these, but I've been asked by the past presidents, council, if they can come make a formal presentation to city council and allow our staff that wasn't able to go to celebrate the awards with us. So, I'm going to hold off on that.
Would one of those include the spotlight that probably needs to be pointed at you for just a couple of seconds? Okay, we got it.
But one of the things also, this Saturday, we held our second installment, installment of the Roots for Wings program, which we, you know, put together in conjunction with our friends from Neighborhood Services and Sustainability and Keep Lewisville Beautiful. And it's been a heavy lift for the city because it requires us to think differently about how we approach, how we landscape not only public spaces, but public, private spaces too, and our homes, and how we address existential threats by working together and just seeing things differently. And during that program, I just wanted to let you all know that the Master Naturalists have recognized it as their Outstanding Project Program of the Year for 2023. They're a big part of that program, helping us with volunteers and doing a lot of the teaching. So, I know that you all have, most of you all up there have attended one of the workshops, and I know we already have the person who hasn't signed up for the 2025 installment. So, just wanted to congratulate everybody on that award, because that is a group lift. So, congratulations to everybody.
Thanks, Stacy.
No report.
Well, I have the lake report. That's not a list of awards, but the lake is at 99.4% full, 521.88 feet.
Are the crappie buying?
What's that?
I said, are the crappie buying?
Sure.
Chief, thank you. Councilmember Green?
My husband says they are. So, I just wanted to quickly mention that we do have the Hedrick House unveiling this Thursday night. I believe it actually starts at noon, so you can drop by and check out the new place. I actually have not seen it yet, so I'm excited for that. There will be a short presentation beginning at 6:00 PM and a ribbon cutting. Then I also just wanted to mention that our animal shelter is pretty full, so go get you a buddy. That's all.
Or two.
Or two. Why not?
No more than six. Councilmember Johnson?
So, I just wanted to give the Parks Department and Neighborhood Services a shout out. I attended the Roots for Wings, a person who is not outdoorsy, who does not have a green thumb, but is very educational. I came away with a plant that I'm trying to figure out how to plant it in my backyard. Yeah, yeah, no, I, they stress that. So, but I have to find whether there's going to be a lot of sun or some shade. So, I've done my research, so I'll get those out there and get going. I probably won't get the certification, because my lot is not big enough. But I will get some natural plants out there, native plants. While we're here, while I'm giving shout-outs, I want to give a shout-out to our Public Works folks, because, you know, I know our seniors came last month, and they were talking about the concrete. There's a gentleman who was in a wheelchair who was saying, talking about the cracks, and I did notice those. And Public Works got out there pretty fast, because the day after that, I saw that they were out there working on that. So, I just want to commend our staff, or, you know, the fast turnaround in the work. You know, a lot of people like to complain about government and what's not right, but clearly, you know, our staff works very hard to work with our residents and staff. We may not always get to the answer we want. We may not be as fast as you want us to be, but we do, we do work very hard. So, I know we love our police and our fire, but we want to give our Public Works people a hand. That's all I have.
Well, I'll just take up on police and fire here, okay? What a week. It was so nice that Sunday, we weren't in the headlines. But it's been quite a trying weekend, and I want to give thanks to you all for that.
City Manager?
A couple of things. I also wanted to echo Councilwoman Kay's comments. This was a hard weekend for staff. First responders, including Public Services, were really tried and came through, did a really excellent job, so I want to thank all of you. Also wanted to highlight a few things. So, we do have a couple of awards that have not been told to council. So, I just want to, I don't know the final results on these, but Dallas Business Journal has named our Ohala Deal one of the finalists for Deal of the Year. National League of Cities has said we're either first or second place. We're not sure on City Cultural Diversity Awards. So, we're going to wait and find out what NLC does with that. And that's for our Chin Sculpture. And then I want to talk about Stacy and Nia. So, she doesn't want me to talk about this, but I think it's worth saying. So, she was also at the TRAPS meeting, or TRAPS Award Banquet. She was awarded the Dan Whitworth Fellow Award. This is the highest award that the society can bestow. This recipient of, the recipient of this honor has been the members of TRAPS and has given outstanding service to the Parks and Recreation Field for a minimum of 10 years, in addition to contributing to the promotion and advancement of the Texas Recreation and Parks Society. But that doesn't really tell you what that moment was. I will tell you that she got a standing ovation. She didn't know she was going to get it. We made sure her husband and mom had secretly flown in as well for her to see, for them to be there for her. And our entire table, including her staff, were in total tears because they were so moved and love her. So, congratulations, Stacy.
It is awesome to have so many people that love their town. So, a couple of quick things. Hedrick House is going to be phenomenal. You definitely want to get out there. So, I'm going to, she stole my thunder, but I'm going to just reiterate. It's awesome. So, thank you, Kristen. Did want to give you guys just a quick rundown of my day of mayor-ing on Saturday. So, Saturday morning, I was on the road by about 4:45 AM. I had the opportunity to represent Lewisville at the Native Plant Society of Texas's Spring Symposium, and it was at the Lady Bird Johnson Wildflower Center. It was a great time. And what's fascinating is when I look back on the journey that our city has taken and that I've taken with our city over the last several years. I grew up looking at water issues as a kid in Arizona. And native plants, when they did live, you only saw them for a week or two, and then they went back to being dormant. But I see those issues with water and water conservation coming up here in Texas. And I've seen it for many years. And so, as we started to have these conversations around water restrictions and native plants, and how do we, how do we move people in that direction? We also threw in this whole butterfly thing. And what I thought was really fun about the butterfly thing when I first said, "Yeah, we should sign up for that," is I thought what it meant was, "Don't hit them with your car, and make sure that you don't use bug spray." And I figured that was the entirety of it, but I'm not bright. Over time, I realized, we got to build habitat for these guys. We got to build, I call it the buckies for butterflies. We got to build that weigh station for the butterflies and the birds and the natives, and it comes from the native plants, which help with the water issues, which help reduce costs of homeownership, and they reduce costs of the city for maintenance and mowing and all those types of things. And do things look a little scruffy sometimes? Yeah, because Texas looks a little scruffy sometimes. And I'm okay with that, because we're in Texas. So, I got the opportunity to toot our horn. I want to thank the Parks Department for, and staff for giving me the data and the information so I could put a really compelling story out there. And I think we're going to get peppered by a lot of people who are excited about what we're doing. So, if I lean on you guys for more information and more opportunities to share our message, please don't hate me. It's a really, it was a great, great time. So, then I zipped back here, because I had to be for the Lewisville Education Foundation, was here to represent the city for that, and we had several folks there. But if you haven't paid any attention to LEF or don't really know what it is, they raise a lot of funds, not just for scholarships for students, but also scholarships and grants for teachers. So, if you're looking for something to be invested in, that focuses on education, LEF is a great one. And then I immediately jumped from that to our Police Department banquet, which was amazing, and I want to thank the chief for jumping in with both feet. I know that that-